I'd like to call this May 9th Board meeting to order, please rise for the Pledgeable Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republi-- for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President, you each have a personnel addendum, other than that, there are no changes.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, beginning with our Superintendent's Excellence Awards.
Good evening. Our first group of awards goes to South High Forensic Students who qualified for state. The team finished seventh overall out of twenty-seven teams. Megan Hegeman is the coach, will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? As I call your name, please step toward Mr. Hall so you can receive your award. And if parents would like to take photos, we're glad to pause for that. After you've received your award, please walk to the end of the line and remain standing until all the students have been recognized. Tyler Ross, Senior. Alvaro Escobedo, Senior. Albany Garcia, Junior. Santiago Vasquez, Freshman. Impromptu Speaking, Foreign Extemporaneous, and Second Place Oration. Aleah Roberts, Freshman. Tristan Kindernet, Freshman. Domestic Extemporaneous, Impromptu Speaking, and Twelfth Place Oration. Brandon Stewart, Freshman. Prose Interpretation and Duo Interpretation. Savannah Benia, Freshman. Robin Logan, Freshman. Prose Interpretation, Duet Acting, and Sixth Place Informative. Michaela Nixon, Senior. Prose Interpretation. Reagan Olson, Freshman. Jacob Sweet, Freshman. Holly Johnson, Freshman. Poetry Interpretation, Humorous Interpretation, and Tenth Place Duet Acting. Hannah Ree, Freshman. Poetry Interpretation and Duet Acting. Ashley Scott, Freshman. Madeline Lilick, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations, we're proud of what you guys do. Congratulations.
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 Good job. Congratulations.
Good to see you up here, Lana.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job, I like your tee-shirt. Congratulations and thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to Forensic Students at Central High School. Nicholas Owen is the coach, will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Elizabeth Collins, Freshman. Lauren Bell, Freshman. Duet Acting. Moses Brown, Freshman. Prose and Dramatic Interpretation, National Qualifier for NCFL, NSDA, and NIETOC. Sandy Dow, Junior. Prose, Original Oration, National Qualifier for NCFL, NSDA, and NIETOC. Madeline Sears, Freshman. Isaac Morris, Freshman. Poetry, Humorous Interpretation, National Qualifier for NCFL. Zeke Edson, Junior. Braden Holtberg, Sophomore. Kerrigan Hutton, Freshman. Taisha Smith, Junior. Aleah Humphries, Sophomore. Duet Acting. Jeb Allen, Sophomore. Informative and Domestic Extemporaneous, National Qualifier for NCFL. Shally Miller, Senior. Erin Little, Senior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Hey, good job. Congratulations. Good job.
Oh, good luck in summer.
Congratulations. Hey, thank you.
We now recognize Journalism Students at South High School who placed at the KSBA Regional Contest and Qualified for State. Kim Warren is their advisor, will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the Journalism Students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their advisor? Logan Maxwell, Senior. Casey Renshaw, Senior. Taylor McIntyre, Senior. Viviana Garcia, Senior. Dylan Norman, Senior. Honorable Mention, Editorial Writing. Shane Miller, Senior. Melissa Tilgeman, Senior. Honorable Mention, Student Life Photography. Kaitlin Billings, Junior. First Place, Editorial Cartoon. Seth Parnell, Junior. Grace Hoag, Sophomore. Kaylee Warren, Sophomore. Honorable Mentions, Headline Writing and Photo Illustration. Five Journalism Students also competed in the Scholastic Press Corps Competition at the Kansas State Fair. The competition put the student journalists in a real-life-on-the-job situation where they used their journalism production skills to cover specific stories and to develop a four-page newsletter in less than seven hours. Senior Logan Maxwell won a ribbon for the best lead story. Other students who made up the team were Seniors Kaitlin Rapp, Casey Renshaw, Alyssa Jones, and Viviana Garcia. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations, outstanding work. Very proud of what you guys did. You did it again. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job. A great job. Congratulations.
And next, we honor Journalism Students at Central High School. J.D. Garber and Shelby Dinkle are their advisors but are unable to attend this evening. Kim Warren will represent the teachers. And will all the Journalism Students please line up? Qualifying and competing were Bailey Steinel, Junior. Gracie Schroeder, Freshman. Ryan Dix, Junior. Annie Hayes, Junior. Keegan Englund, Senior. Carly Benson, Junior. Morgan Dalton, Junior. First Place, News Page Design. Third Place, Advertising. Honorable Mentions, Yearbook Copy and Photo Illustration. Chloe Gillett, Junior. Lauren Wood, Junior. Ellie Cobb, Junior. Sarah Brown, Senior. Olivia Johnson, Junior. Abigail Schroeder, Senior. Caroline Holderson, Senior. Emma Norris, Senior. Second Place, Headline Writing. Would you please allow the Board to congratulate you now?
Hey, congratulations, good job. Good job.
Our next group of awards goes, excuse me, to FFA Students at Central and South High Schools who qualified for state. Brooke Petty is their coach, will you please join Mr. Hall? And will all the FFA Students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Qualifying and competing from Central were Canyon Illingworth, Senior, Entomology and Veterinary Science. Kamisha Stevenson, Senior, Entomology and Horse Judging. Hannah Sell, Senior, Entomology. Madison Crowder, Sophomore, Entomology and Veterinary Science. Paul Gunder, Junior, Veterinary Science. Jeremy Lee Vigil, Junior, Veterinary Science. Ben Irtan, Sophomore, Livestock Judging. Qualifying and competing from South were Brittany Timmons, Junior, Horse Judging. Kaitlin Elder, Sophomore, Livestock Judging. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
Well done.
Great job.
Great job, sir. Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Good job.
Well done.
Hey, great job. Congratulations. Congratulations, a good job.
Now, we will recognize Renaissance Teachers of the Month, January through May 2017. Will they please join Mr. Hall in the front of the room? Renaissance Teachers are recognized through radio announcements and on the Citywide Self-Storage Electronic Sign. Dick Two delivers a prize package from businesses supporting the Renaissance Program including Y-93.7, KSAL, 24/7 Travel Stores, Citywide Self-Storage, and McDonald's of Salina. January through May, Renaissance Teachers of the Month were: Central High School, Lindsay Modine, Orchestra Teacher. March, Elizabeth Jansen, Spanish Teacher. April, Anna Voth, Geometry, Algebra II, and AP Statistics Teacher. Lakewood Middle School, January, Ryan Brungart, Sixth Grade Social Studies Teacher. February, Ally Borhees, Seventh Grade Reading Teacher. March, Erin Coons, Sixth Grade Science Teacher. April, Susan Hall, Sixth Grade English Teacher. May, Teresa Kikefer, Sixth and Seventh Grade Physical Education Teacher. South High School, Lori Terrain, for January, Science Teacher. February, Mary Pat Wees, Physical Education, Health Teacher. March, Larry Nutter, Science Teacher. April, Gary Seibel, Industrial Arts Teacher. May, Agnes Zajnoff, English Teacher. South Middle School, January, Candice Crawford, Seventh, Eighth Grade Reading Teacher. February, Megan Compton Alley, Sixth Grade ELA and Reading Teacher. April, Julie Reddick, Eighth Grade English Teacher. May, Samantha McCary, Seventh and Eighth Grade Math Teacher.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks so much for all you've done.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
For all that you do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Hi, so are you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations.
How are you?
Good job.
Yeah, in a week.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Hi Larry, congratulations. Congratulations, Gary. I'm glad with those fellows.
Moving on in our agenda, we'll start with our bond update with Ms. Scheck.
I believe each of you have the copy of that presentation on your desktop, if you want to go ahead and pull it up.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll start our bond presentation with South Middle School. This school is essentially complete. The only thing that is holding up our certificate of occupancy from the city of Salina is landscaping. I expect to have a landscaping plan to submit to the city by the end of this week, fingers crossed. This school met all of the directives that you guys set forth for us. It came in on time, it came in under budget, and we provided the school with some really beautiful and flexible new spaces. So this will be my last update for South Middle School. Stewart is also 100% complete. The city-required landscaping has been planted on this project. Chiny Construction has not reseeded the areas of the campus that were disturbed by construction. We're kind of in that middle place where it's too warm to plant fescue and it's not warm enough to plant Bermuda, so we're just kind of hanging in there for a little bit. And the city won't, again, issue us a certificate of occupancy until we have a decent stand of grass. The bid for this project came in almost right at the budget, so any changes in construction that we had to make were bound to take the project over budget. As of this month, we're seventy-nine, oh, my numbers are not right, we're eighty-eight thousand six hundred nineteen dollars over budget. We had some plumbing issues that we didn't prepare, that we weren't anticipating. We had some electrical issues that we didn't know about until we got into, you know, the actual work. So we had a couple of things crop up on us that did take us over budget. So unfortunately, I can't say that we met that directive from you, but they do have some beautiful new spaces in that school as well. And this will be the last update for Stewart. Sunset is also complete. They have recently had the new playground equipment installed and the mulch has been spread. Chiny Construction is in the process of removing the damaged asphalt from their large hard-surface play area that will be replaced. Once that new asphalt has been laid, then they can go in and finish up the last little bit of concrete, which includes the last section of the walking trail that we added through the bond project. As with Stewart, this project came in really close to its overall budget. We tried really hard to make some good decisions on this project and we ended up twenty thousand five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars over budget. And that includes thirty thousand dollars of unsuitable soil that we ran into very early on in the project. This project also did not come in on time, it's the only project that did not come in on time. This project should have been finished in October, but there were just a myriad of delays that threw us off schedule. None of the delays really negatively impacted the school in a significant way. There were some minor inconveniences, but the staff at Sunset were remarkably flexible with us and they rolled with all the punches and they made it much easier than it could have been. And this will be my last report on Sunset. Salina Adult Education Center has a new addition now that is dried in. The electrical work and the interior finishes should go fairly quickly now. Adult Ed is one project where you can clearly tell that there was an addition added to the building and that's because the brick doesn't match as closely as what we had intended it to. Making brick is apparently a lot like making meatloaf, at least at my house. I can use the same recipe every single time and it never tastes the same twice. This brick that they use at Adult Ed is still a commonly-used brick color, and they use the exact same process to make the brick, it just came out looking just different enough to be able to tell that there was a new addition. The substantial completion date is tentatively scheduled for first part of June. Their contract completion date is June 15th, so Chiny Construction is fairly confident that they will bring this project in on time. We did find out that we have a den of foxes that live behind the school and apparently we have four cubs that come out every morning and run around in the yard and play and Chiny Construction is trying very diligently to not disturb their habitat. At South High, we did find some additional asbestos in some floor tile in the existing kitchen and some existing restrooms. That asbestos cannot be removed until students are out of the building, but as you can see in the picture, demolition of the pod has started, it started yesterday. Macau and Gordon is taking very strict care to make sure they don't disturb that newly-found asbestos. As long as they don't mess with that, we're fine. And then, starting the week of the 22nd, they'll be able to go in and remove that floor slab that has that tile on it and haul it off and get rid of it. The entire pod should be gone by the end of this week. We have a lot of conflicting, "Oh, it's so sad to see the pods go," and then you have the other group of people cheering that, "Yay, the pods are finally leaving." The hydronic lines for the 200 and 300 pods are being rerouted so that we can continue providing air conditioning. However, they did have a fitting burst while they were doing work on those lines and we lost almost all of the glycol. So for today and probably part of tomorrow, students in the 200 and 300 pods will not have air conditioning. Getting those units back up and running is Macau and Gordon's number-one priority right now. They know that that's a, could be a PR nightmare for them if they don't get it fixed immediately. The construction debris from the demolition of the 400 pod will be recycled to the greatest extent possible. All of the structural steel will be hauled to a local recycling company and they'll do with it whatever they do and all of the concrete will be hauled off to a different company and it will be crushed and resold as gravel. So right now, the project is on schedule. The asbestos has caused a very minor delay, but I don't see it impacting our overall completion date. Central High School used their new auxiliary gym for their tornado drill and Principal Showman reported that everything went just great. And I believe he made the comment that he thought they were actually missing some students because they had so much room left and everyone fit in there very comfortably. Areas 2B North, which are the computer labs, and 2B South, which is the performing arts area, are about to wrap up. Macau and Gordon has planned a TCO inspection for this week for both of those areas. The art and media area has most of the interior work complete. The recent rains have delayed a lot of their exterior site work, but that is not affecting their schedule at all. The Phase 11 classrooms are still missing, the Lula elevator, which is limited-use, limited-access for our disabled students. Macau and Gordon is going to try to get a certificate of, or temporary certificate of occupancy on that phase of classrooms, except for that one little area where the elevator's going to be installed and it should be installed later this summer. Overhead inspections have been scheduled for the culinary arts and interior design spaces and starting May 19th, once the school has, for the most part, been vacated, demolition of all the remaining renovation areas will start in earnest. It's going to be a very crazy summer at Central High this year and that's going to include demolition in the construction studio and drafting lab, the maintenance spaces, the woodshop, and the new administrative spaces. Macau and Gordon will also begin removing some of the temporary walls that have been up during this school year to make the work flow a little bit easier for construction this summer. that have been up during this school year to make the workflow a little bit easier for construction this summer. The picture up there is a really neat design element that DLR Group came up with. It's hard, kind of hard to see, but the sheet rock actually has W R S C inset into it. They used two sheets of plywood to create this. On the top sheet of, not plywood, sheet rock, sorry about that. They cut out the letters from the top sheet and then they used a curved flexible molding so that they could get really nice smooth edges around the edge of the letters. And this is in the foyer by the student entrance by the new art rooms. So eventually, at the end of the school year, this is going to have a nice fancy paint job and it's going to be a pretty impactful design piece. And I did want to remind everyone that you can go to the USD 305 website and see video that we take of the construction and demolition. A lot of people are really interested in the demo of the pod coming down, but you can go to the USD 305 website and we're video in that, so everyone can see that. Does anyone have any questions for me? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. Moving on to our approval of our consent agenda items, beginning with the minutes of the April 25th, 2017 regular meeting, our personnel report, our financial reports, including our April bills list and our April bond bills list, our bond budget summary, and we're approving our encumbrance listing, beginning with to Ween and Hammer in the amount of $32,046.62 for the annual maintenance agreement renewal for ALEO, to CDWG for the Scanmail suite for Microsoft Exchange maintenance renewal in the amount of $27,260.49, to Skyward in the amount of $62,866 for the software license renewal, to Simplex Grenelle in the amount of $74,131.87 for the electronic entry control system at Coronado and Cottonwood Elementary Schools, to Assurance Partners for the district's insurance package for the 17-18 year in the amount of $713,225, and to approve our copy paper bid to Premium Paper and Packaging for the purchase of 16,800 reams of white copy paper in the amount of $36,204. Any questions or would anyone like to make a motion to approve those consent agenda items as presented? Ann?
I move we accept the consent agenda items as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second from Mary Ann. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now would be your time. Not seeing anyone rushing up. We'll go ahead and move on to our action agenda, beginning with our 17-18 handbooks, beginning with our Chromebooks with Ms. Xine.
You'll recall that at last, at the last board meeting, I presented to you some changes to the 2017-18 Chromebook handbook. And the most substantial change is in the use and ownership section, and so I want to just remind you of that, that beginning with the class of 2020, we are recommending that students will have the option to keep their Chromebook in case upon graduating from USD 305 with their cohort class in May. Other than that, most of the changes were wording Student Help Desk versus Media Center. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time for you?
Yes.
Yes.
I had this question in the frequently asked questions section. It says, "At the time," the answer after the question says, "At the time, the district cannot secure the devices when off-campus." So I was just not sure if it was when you're going on these trips that it's talking about or at this time. So there's my question, what does that mean?
We, we actually, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. We just need to remove those three words and start that sentence with "the."
Oh, okay.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Is this just a first reading?
No, this is a reaction.
Would anyone like to make a motion then? With that, Mary Ann?
I move that we approve the Chromebook handbook as presented with the editorial change.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to our athletic handbooks with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, I presented the suggested changes to the board at the last board meeting and so unless there's questions, I would recommend that we approve those changes for the 17-18 athletic handbook as presented.
I'd like to move that we approve the 2017-2018 athletic handbook as presented at the April 25th, 2017 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Not hearing or seeing anything, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. We'll move on in our action agenda to our commencement dates for 2018.
Yes, Madam President, somewhat of a formality, but we're actually looking at setting the graduation dates for South and Central High for a year from this time. Obviously, we have commencement for both of those schools this Sunday for this year, but I would recommend to the board that we approve the date, Sunday, May 13th, 2018, beginning at 2:00 PM for Central High, 5:00 PM for South High for their commencements at the 2020's Pizza Event Center.
Just sounds silly. Okay, moving on, okay. Anyone would like to make that motion? Oh, Mary Ann?
I move that we approve the 2018 commencement date of May 13th, 2018 as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, anyone like a second of that? Okay, any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our Salina Adult Education Center graduation date for 2018.
Yes, Madam President, I would recommend to the board that we approve the proposed ceremony for, again, a year from now, May 31st, 2018, for the Salina Adult Education graduation ceremony and it will be located or held at, do we know yet? We don't need to kind of do that. Probably not the Tony's Pizza Event Center, formerly the Bicentennial Center. But I would recommend that we set that date, May 31st, 2018, for the graduation date for Salina Adult Education Center.
All right.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like a lot later than this year, is that right?
Actually, we have, I think it's next week, I think, is it, is it not? If I remember correctly, I think it's next week. Why, why is so late, I'm not completely sure. That's just a date that Ms. Mulberry had suggested, do we know?
No.
It's sure, so it's not too far, it's like six days later, I guess. It'd be, obviously it'd be right after Memorial Day weekend, I would imagine, so.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion on that? Ann?
Sure. I move that we approve the May 31st, 2018 GED graduation date as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, anyone like to second that? I have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. That concludes our action agenda, I'm not seeing anything on our discussion agenda. We'll move on to our school board reports and upcoming dates of importance, beginning with Thursday, May 11th, is the DCP graduation at Salina West at 4:00 PM. Sunday, May 14th, is our graduations, South High, beginning at 2:00 PM, and Central High Schools, beginning at 5:00 PM. Thursday, May 18th, is our SAEC graduation at Salina Community Theater at 7:00 PM. And Saturday, May 20th, is our last chamber legislative meeting at 8:30 AM. Brett, would you like to start us off for our board reports?
I attended the trucey board meeting last week and also looking forward to the graduations this weekend. Also, didn't realize, but today is Teacher's Appreciation Day, so.
Mary Ann?
On Monday of this week, I attended the principal's breakfast at South. Every year, they invite former faculty to attend that breakfast and they had it in the new part of the building and it looks a lot different than when we toured. On Thursday of last week, I attended, I'm sorry, on Monday evening of last week, I attended the Senior Honor Recognition. There were 83 students recognized and I don't know how many thousand dollars of scholarships, but it would be interesting to know. And it's always nice to be there to honor the students who have achieved well. And Thursday was Heartland Volunteer Luncheon and that was neat. Lots of student art up, displayed, very nicely displayed. It's exciting to see what our kids do, all the way from preschool to post-high. And Sunday, I attended the retirement recognition. We had several 25-year honorees and I think over 20 retiring this year. I had to miss the Smoky Hill due to another commitment and I'm looking forward to graduation Sunday.
Well, I read to first graders, I read Too Many Frogs by Sandy Asher with illustrations by Keith Graves. I attended the South High School Poetry Slam and then the grand finale for both Central and South winners at AdAstra's the following Friday. I attended the South High Senior Honors Banquet and like Mary Ann, was impressed with the vast number of scholarships and excellent achievements of the students. And I also attended the Heartland Appreciation Lunch and then the same evening, I went to the Heartland Policy Council and I can report there that they had had 500 people at the Big Truck Night for Heartland Early Education. They're making new efforts at Heartland to make sure their four-year-olds, five-year-olds have kindergarten skills and so they've been practicing carrying lunch trays and using straws and sports. And two of the Heartland staff got articles, two separate articles, published in the Four State Regional Head Start Magazine, which is called Sandbox, in the winter issue. Let's see, I attended the Central Vocal Music Concert and I was so impressed with how enthusiastically the mostly student audience was for all of the efforts of the singers and the whole auditorium was full that night, so I think that's all, thank you.
I did attend South Senior Honors Banquet and there were also, it was also a lot of action behind the doors because students were coming and going, is that there were several events that night for high school students and it was interesting to watch the parents running them in and running them out and all that activity. Also attended the Heartland Luncheon and the artwork was impressive. It surrounded us on all four walls and I appreciated that. I attended the Wesleyan Prep Breakfast, representing USD 305, and attended the Salina Education Foundation Executive Meeting this week.
Great.
Completed the sunset reading, went to South Senior Awards Night and also to the retirement reception for our staff and it was very well attended this year, I thought that was very nice, so.
Ramona?
I also attended the Heartland Appreciation Luncheon and the art from the youth, from the students was great, but we have some very talented parents and staff at that, within that group. And so with that, I found a really, really cool, neat thing that I'm going to be purchasing from one of the parents. So I did shopping there. And the, and the cool thing is, is that the parent was excited that somebody was interested in what she had done. So while, you know, especially with this, while we are teaching and nurturing the youth, we have to remember that parents have some things that they, you know, aspirations maybe or just concerns, so just encouraging them as well is just as important. So I was glad that she was excited because I'm like, going to be like, very happy, thank you Ann, for helping me to hook that up. On Friday, I was very nervous as I participated in the master plan Parks and Rec interviews. Had not a clue what that meant. So I'm like, okay, and I went and it was actually quite painless. What they were doing, the consultant is just checking to find out, number one, what do you think about our park system and what do you think about, just things to do in general in Salina. I'm like, it's a great place to be. So we will see what that report comes out to be. The retirement reception on Sunday was amazing. To see the number of years of experience that are walking out the door, that are irreplaceable. We can get more people, but it's just, it's there, it's, it's, yeah. It was very, very heartwarming and I was, I was very, very pleased to be a part of that. Received this afternoon, a press release, woo-hoo, from Parks and Rec. And we're about eight weeks out of the Salina Field House opening, yes. And there are two major events already scheduled for July. So the 13th of July, Jeff Hawkins, who was a former KU student, basketball player, he and his wife are organizing the first annual Jeff Hawkins Salina Basketball Tournament, or Workshop, and it's K through 3rd grade in the morning, 4th through 12th in the afternoon. So that's going to be kind of cool. And then, M Y B is going to have the first annual Salina Downtown Showdown, a two-day tournament on July 22nd and 23rd. So cool stuff going on within the city of Salina.
I think the only thing that I didn't hear mentioned was I attended the Central High Awards Banquet a couple of weeks ago.
Very good. Just a couple of things, first of all, the, just a reminder, and I shared this, I think, with the board at the last board meeting, but on two, on Saturday, May 20th, is our First Annual Pedal Power Festival and in which they're celebrating, I'm saying they're celebrating, I think they are really educating and having fun with bicycle safety and kind of in a bicycle fair format. A lot of, all, many students, many youth are invited to come, bring their bicycles and so that promises to be a good day as well and we're kind of part of that.
Free helmets.
Free, they get, they do get free helmets.
First hundred or something like that.
That's right, so it's, it's really a good deal. That's over at Oakdale Elementary School, so folks are encouraged to attend that. Also had, had the opportunity last week to be the keynote speaker at Hughesner's 5th Grade Graduation and I enjoyed doing that thoroughly, had an opportunity to visit with the students and, and so it's kind of, it's interesting because my first year here, they were all entering kindergarten and now they're, they're moving on to middle school. And so they, it was a very good event and Hughesner did a very nice job putting that on, so. Also had an opportunity last week to go out to East Crawford Rec and visit with about 700 3rd graders and give the opening address to the Kansas Kids Fitness Day. And we had kids from all of our elementary schools. In addition, we had kids from Southeast of Celine, El Celine, Smokey Valley, Glasgow, St. Mary's. We had a number of them, so it's, it's like the 19th Annual Kansas Kids Fitness Day program. I know Deb Christie at P E T, her son's at Elementary, coordinates that and has for a number of years. It's just a, such a neat program, we have kids from Kansas Western come out and help support that and it's, it's a really good program, so. Today, we had at Heartland, we had Congressman Roger Marshall, who was there, who read to students at Heartland. And they also had their Mother's Day graduation celebration at Heartland today as well. So just a lot of things happening right now and ending up the school year, so that's all I have to report.
And we need an executive session for personnel?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to request an executive session for five minutes for personnel, please.
All right, anyone like to make that motion?
Okay, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 6:00 for five minutes for the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:05 in the board conference room.
Okay, I have a motion, would anyone like to second that? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Not hearing or seeing anything, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero.